We are recording. President Henning.
President Henning, are you there?
President Henning.
President Henning, you have no microphone. That's a problem. You cannot use your iPad, I guess. This is not, this is a problem.
Yeah, I'm not understanding why.
It might not have a microphone. He might be on an iPad that has no microphone.
John, can you hear us? Or do you have a camera?
There he is. We have a camera now, John, but do you have a microphone on your iPad? Because we cannot hear you and we can't mute you or unmute you. Can you hear us? I'll call him. I'm putting myself on mute.
Okay, just to do a microphone check while we're waiting, just with other trustees. President Scotty. Are you here? Vice President Grant. Second to these microphones, President Scotty. Do you have access to your microphone? For some reason. President Scotty, do you have access to your microphone?
I don't think you can hear. I don't think he can hear you.
No, I don't think so either.
Which one?
President Scotty, Vern. Vice President Brandt, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Thank you. Secretary Campbell.
She, we have to ask her to unmute. Sorry, she muted herself.
That's gonna be. Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, you can't if you mute yourself now. Here, let me get Pat up. If you mute yourself, we have to let you back in.
But you're, are you going to keep us muted during the meeting until we talk? Or is everyone going to stay unmuted?
You can stay unmuted. The board can stay unmuted.
Okay.
So part of the reason I want to be able to mute is if it gets loud in here. So I'm not distracting. So I can go ahead and mute later. Yeah, good. Okay, I'm here.
President Henning, are you able to hear us?
I am.
Oh, and we hear you. That's wonderful.
Works two ways. That's great.
And how about you, Andy? Do we have you?
He can hear us.
Okay.
He's muted.
I think we are all accounted for.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
So everyone's, everyone's here and accounted for?
Bill, did you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, Bill's now here. We're good.
All right, very good. So do you have, I'll call a meeting to order then. Do you have roll call, Anne? Are you going to do roll call?
Yeah, ready?
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Brandt.
Not on the committee, but I'm here.
Trustee Thomas is here.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
And President Scotty.
He was here earlier.
Yeah, he, oh, yeah, he's here. I can see him. Okay. I got the roll.
All right, thank you. As Dave mentioned before, he's not part of the committee and the committee consists of Pat Fritz, Lynn Campbell, and myself. That doesn't mean we don't want to hear from everybody, just. We need the three of us to do those matters. So anyway.
No, I can't say anything. Earlier, we missed a few trustees.
Vern, you have two microphones on.
Okay, now I can't say anything.
You have to turn off. Turn off one of your microphones. Elizabeth, are you calling him? Or I'm going to call him? Okay, I texted, I did text Vern to turn off the sound on one of his devices. I think that was the issue.
Okay, so you think we're ready to move on?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Lynn to, that we can do this meeting remotely. I think that's there. Lynn, would you like to sponsor that motion?
Yes, I'll move to that for remote meeting.
And Pat, could you second that?
Second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. That moves us to public comment. Elizabeth and Anne, are you monitoring that? Or want to be able to and want to be work with Vern?
Yes, absolutely. So is anybody from the public that would like to make public comment? If you would please raise your hand on the participant side. There's an area to raise your hand if you want to speak. And comments will be limited to three minutes. And we'll take a little bit of time here, just in case everybody's needing to look for it.
Could I ask, how many participants do we have?
We have a total of 21 in the room. And of course, we've got a full board of seven and our trustee eight and staff. So, and it looks as if many that are out there, the others, I see names of team members. So again, I'm going to ask anybody from the public if you would like to make a comment, just to raise your hand. Or request to have your microphone unmuted. We'll go one more time. Anybody from the public that would like to make public comment this evening? Please raise your hand or request to turn off your microphone. We'll complete that. President Henning, I don't believe there's anyone wishing to make public comments.
All right, thank you. That moves us on to 4.0 new and unfinished business. Are we going to see any of that, are we going to see any of the agenda up on our screen? Or is that not happening?
So we're going to run through some, not the agenda specifically, but because we have some slides to show you as part of the presentation this evening. So.
Okay.
Andy set up for the first one, if you would like.
Okay, so Andy's going to start us off?
I'll start us out. And Andy, while I do that, I'm going to share the screen here. Hey, Andy, I've made you a co-host.
If I can get this going here.
While he's getting ready. So what we want to share with you, obviously with the pandemic, staff has been working not only to migrate and to adapt to this environment, but we've also been working to mitigate the change and to act to the district. So as soon as Andy gets the slides up, he will walk you through all of the items. And so that should give you some background and not only knowledge, but a good understanding and comfort where the district is as we've been navigating this since back in end of February.
Getting close. So I think this should do it. So does everybody see the first slide?
Yep, I do.
All right. It's enough time for that slide.
Yep.
Um, I think everybody's very familiar with this pie chart. We show it every year as we do the budget and the levy. And we're all very aware of the heavy reliance we have on property taxes to support the operations of the district. And really, over the last decade, you know, that's been a financial burden to the district as compared to other agencies that have lots of other non-tax alternative revenue opportunities that just aren't available to the district. And really, that's compounded even more when we remember that, you know, since 2011, the district's only been able to effectively raise its property tax twice since that time. So while that's been a burden, you know, over the last decade, as we run into an economic crisis like we're in now, in the short term, that actually becomes an advantage due to the historic reliability of the property taxes over other agencies that are now faced with, you know, very drastic and significant reductions of non-tax revenues that are much more vulnerable. One of the things I did, and this isn't in the information I sent you, it's just a couple of slides in front of that. Just by comparison, I went out and got the information for the most recent budget. It's online for the city of Woodstock. You can see in blue. That's the percentage of their general fund operating revenue supported by property taxes. And then 74% alternative. McHenry County, 42 versus 38.
Andy, time out. Vern cannot hear anybody.
Yeah, I'm working through that and trying to see if I can log him out and back in.
Okay.
Um, as a last resort, I could call him, you know, on my phone and just have, at least he'd hear.
No, the problem was that would be your microphone. We'd have feedback.
Is Vern able to see us, see this?
He can see it, but he has no sound. He cannot hear us.
All right, well, this part of it, he can, you can just read it as Andy does it. It's pretty self-explanatory. So let's go through this slide.
Keep moving. Rafford Park District, 51%, 49. Now, as we look at the forest preserves, they start, you know, leaning more toward the district. King County Forest Preserve, 69% property tax base, 31% alternative. Lake County. And then compared to MCCD. And again, it's not to suggest that, you know, this all disappeared 100%, but you know, this line's probably something like this. And obviously, all these agencies, and I stayed in on three different roundtables with lots of directors of finance for municipalities and park districts. And they're all contending with, you know, big immediate losses of a large portion of their revenue that they have to start contending with right away. Unlike the district, we're only showing 19%. And if I add the farm lease to that, this additional 12% is actually the farm lease, cell towers. You know, we believe that to be very stable too, for the next year through fiscal year '21. So we're really left with just a 7%. And about half of that, we think, you know, we're still going to collect. So that brings us in, this is basically the information I sent you. I'm not going through it all. I'm just seeing the highlights on some of the big revenue and expenditures. The first one, obviously, is the property taxes. Every year, we pretty much budget any 30 basis points of uncollectible tax levy. We're raising that in this scenario to 50 basis points. I, I think, you know, it's going to be closer to 30. I'll be surprised if it's 50. Through the 2008, you know, 2014 home housing fallout, I think it hit 28 basis points. So it never really even then went above the 30. But by raising it to 50, that represents $10,901 less than what we had in the 21 budget of property tax revenue. And we did include a delay of 30% of those revenues not coming in until September. And this graph just shows the timing of the property tax receipts from fiscal year '06 to 2020 by month. And you can see there, it's very tight, which just means there's not a lot of disparity from year to year. It follows a very similar pattern. In fact, the only two lines where you see a slight bump out in delay are levy years '05 and '06, which is actually before the housing crisis, you know, a couple of years before. And then one other quick slide just, just shows the uncollectible portion of the property tax levy by year. And again, you can see in '08, or fiscal year '10, but levy year '08, that is, you know, the first time the housing really started to fall. And that year, you had that 28 basis points. It averages about $15,000 a year that's uncollectible. Looking at the farm lease revenue, a couple of things here. The first line you see, we had budgeted $4 in corn in the 21 budget. Remember, we were building that budget in September and October. Corn came in at $3.88 in February. So the 21 budget has $29,000 of revenue in farm leases that we know are not going to collect due to that. And then, when we built the budget, we had 113 acres that I had still in my spreadsheets that I used to project the budget in crop row corn production. That was actually pulled out then and put into hay lease and grasses, I think. That represented another $12,000 or $11,799 of revenue that's in the 21 budget that we know we're not going to get. And that's pre this COVID crisis. Didn't have anything to do with it, really. Just the timing of the budget. Um, so lastly, what we did do is we put in a 2.5% uncollectible assumption and reduced the revenue by $25,000. We've never had any substantial uncollectible lease payment. I don't think it's likely it would be this high, but we have it in there just, you know, to show how we're going to mitigate these if they come true. Illinois personal property replacement tax, this is actually based on commercial business income. And so, you know, this one out of all of them is the most likely to happen. It's probably going to be at least a 40% reduction. So we're showing that $74,000 going away. In the full forecast that I sent out, it does show all the revenues in the budget. So again, I'm just touching on a few of the bigger ones here. Everybody can still hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just looking at the screen. I'm not seeing you guys, so. Then the last one, I'll touch it on the revenue side, is the education program fees. Obviously, summer camps went away, all those big group programs, you know, most of what they do, we couldn't do it anymore. And they've been spending the last month or two, you know, working on developing new program delivery methods. And they're looking forward to getting that rolling. But we're reducing the program revenue that we had in the budget by $67,000. Some of that too is those big, large events that we had as well, that obviously we can't do. And then interest income goes down, $18,000. You would think this would be a lot more. The big reason that it's more stable is because 80% of our available cash is invested in CDs with an average maturity of two years. So a lot of it's just not exposed to this downward trend. The other piece that's kind of key here is that, well, this is only an 11% reduction from the budget. If you look at what we actually collected, you know, part of that $600,000 surplus we have from fiscal year '20, it's a 38% reduction from the 80, from what we collected in fiscal year '20, if that makes sense. So we're, you know, the budget was pretty conservative. But if you look at what we actually collected, it's a pretty big reduction, what we think is going to happen. So total revenues we show going down 284,000 or 3% of the total budget. On the expense side, the big thing we're doing to offset this, and I'm, you know, I'm assuming all the trustees are were aware of this quite some time ago. All the seasonals have been eliminated. The only exceptions to that is the education that hired one early seasonal in February prior to the COVID and isolation. That person stayed on through May 15, so that's not included, you know, as part of the reduction. And then we're preserving one seasonal to serve as the campground host for Thomas Woods, because we do have a plan to have that reopen in a more limited capacity. And then we also are having one seasonal stay on to replace a full-time ranger who's going on a six-week family leave vacancy. We're going to see significant fuel savings. This number's actually probably going to be a bigger savings than we're showing here based on what, you know, what prices are right now today. I started this a couple of weeks ago. Um, it does, again, we thought the 21 budget, we had built in prices going up, not down. So by comparison, the revised 115 we're showing represents a 16% decrease from the actual expense that we experienced last year. So it looks pretty big, a 28% reduction we're seeing from the 21 budget. But if you compare to the actual we had in '20, it's only a 16% reduction. So I think it's, it's pretty reasonable. We'll probably hit that target. In this scenario, this first one, which we think is the most likely, we're assuming that all the capital that's been approved in the 21 budget, we go forward with it. And this is the sheet that I sent out. That's all the capital you've seen before. You approved it as part of the budget process. Total's 399,000. Everything in the top here is really either already been purchased or you're, you know, at the next board meeting, you'll be moving forward on it. We're pretty committed to it. It's not to see if the board wanted to. They obviously have the authority to stop really everything but those top two items. The other thing is, on the bottom half, everything we're not committed to up here, we're not going to bring anything forward until July. So that'll give us the full month of June to watch the property taxes come in, as well as how does the economy do in general as we start phasing in the reopening of the states. It'll just give us more time to assess. And then again, it's month to month, most of these items, they're going to require board approval anyway. So most of the stuff's over the board authority threshold. So it'll be back in front even when we do decide to move on it. Then in there, you'll see there was a summary. So this just summarizes all the revenue reductions that we're making. This is the 21 budget as you approved it. This is our estimated after we make the changes. Total reduction of revenue, 284,000 or 3%. Same with the expenses. This is the 21 budget you approved, 9,755. After we back out $313,000 to offset this lost revenue, brings the expense total down to 9,441. Reduction of 3.2%. And actually, you know, this is just how this came out. It plays favorably. It's actually $29,000, you know, less of an operate, of a reserve spend than we had budgeted to do. Again, I didn't go through every expense item and make changes to it. We just went through the big ones. So really, all we're trying to show is this loss of revenue, most of that's probably pretty likely. But we'll be able to offset it with the seasonal reduction and some of the other cutbacks we made. Questions, comments so far? Then the other thing that I do, it doesn't mean a lot to the board, but one of the things I did within the first week, as you start, and all the directors, the finance that I've talked to, their big concern is, can you pay your bills? Is there enough cash in the bank, cash coming in with these, you know, those non-tax revenues that they're not going to get? How are they going to pay the bills? The district's very strongly reserved. We have $7 million in the general fund. Some of that's a sign, but in a, you know, real crisis, it could become available. I'm not considering any of that for this liquidity exercise. But basically, I take our beginning cash. I take those revenues, expenses, project them out each month. I bring over what that monthly surplus or deficit is and subtract it from the cash. And then we have CD maturities coming. So I roll those in and I come up with the cash, projected cash balances. You know, is this going to be perfect? No, but it's pretty close to tell us we should be okay. And then I did that for all the quarters and you'll see, it's always a positive. As you get to the end, you know, that last big tax receipt could spend down. We're still providing for that pension loan paydown. So now we're getting down there, but that's not an alarming number by any means. I've been that low just from investing strongly and we haven't run into a problem, so. And then I showed you all the detail for it. There's really no reason to look if you're looking at that package beyond, you know, pages 12. I put it in there just because it's driving the numbers. It goes out each month by quarter to drive that liquidity analysis. If we weren't doing the liquidity analysis, you really don't even need to drive the monthly budget piece of it. The expense side, the same thing. You all notice, just like we do our forecasting that we've shown you in the past, instead of showing all the departments in this many expense lines for each department, which then you'd be multiplying the same by another, you know, 11 times. We group everything by object. So all the vehicles from each department, fuel, where each department comes into one line, utilities, salaries, and all that. It just makes it much easier, much more accurate to forecast it out. But the total down here is this, you know, grand total we approved in the budget. And then, real quickly, there's just a couple of changes we did to look at a second scenario. Worst case, again, I don't think it's very likely at all, you know, for the district. But what we did is we took that three tenths of 1% uncollectible. We brought it all the way up to 1%. So that represents a $48,000 reduction from the property tax revenue of the 21 budget. And I dragged the receipts out, whereas at 9:30, we've only collected 57%. And then the rest of it's coming in all the way through February, just to look at that liquidity, you know, is it, is it an impact or not? Um, on the farm lease revenue, we raised the uncollectible allowance to 5% from 2.5%. So $50,000 reduction from budget. Again, not very likely, but worst case scenario. There's always a worst, worst-case scenario, but worst probable case scenario. And then the PPRT, this one probably is very realistic. Reduced it by 60% versus 40 in the first scenario. So reducing that from the budget by $111,000. On the capital side, again, everything on the top we're committed to. So in the second scenario, it's all left in. The differences in the bottom, we're picking up two police vehicles that we consider pretty essential now that they're taking the vehicles home. We've also kept the fuel station as we're starting to see, at least at the Glacial Park region, we're starting to have some issues. It's working, but it's problematic. It's, it's not always timely and reliable. We don't want to be in a position where we can't track the fuel, where it's going, who's putting it in. It's just not a situation we want to be in. Again, none of this would come forward until July. It wouldn't come out at one time. And we'll continue to monitor. The board would have to approve these as we brought them forward. The difference being then is the 171 up here, 171,000 of capital up here, plus 107,000 for these other three. So it's a total of 278 versus that 399. So reducing the capital in the second scenario, 121,000 to offset that additional revenue shortfall. And then this is the summary. We show total revenues going down 413 or 4%. Total expenses going down 434, 4.5%. Again, actually plays out a little bit better. The 21 budget shows a $380,000 draw on reserves. And this is only 364. Cash flows all fine and that's all I got.
Very good. Thank you, Andy. Very thorough job. Appreciate it. Anyone have any questions for Andy? Not hearing or seeing any. I don't know if that means anything or not, but anyway.
Is that good or bad?
I don't know. It just may mean that I don't know what's going on. Anyway, with that said, I'm going to move on. And like I said, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's going to move us on to 4.2. Pandemic preparedness, response, and recovery. Elizabeth?
Right, I'm working on getting things up here. Let's see what happens and what's on your screen. What do you see? Do you see the?
The plan.
Okay, awesome. Very good. That's what you should be seeing here. So I'm just going to take you through very briefly and then be able to answer any questions on this document. So, as you know, the district, we've had a crisis management plan. We have a safety plan. We did not have a pandemic plan. But back in February, we quickly moved and put together a task team together to help us migrate and mitigate what was coming down the pike and did an amazing job with the entire team working together to make this happen. I don't need to know, to tell you what goes into a pandemic, but it basically has catastrophic effects on our health and our economics. And so this plan. And so this plan, its goal is to guide us into navigating those scenarios. And basically, as we went along, we made decisions and this plan basically codifies those decisions and aligns very strategically what the governor has outlined with stages. And we looked at it from our stages before we knew what the governor was doing and actually they, they worked pretty well. Ultimately, the goal, there's, there's five goals that are identified within the plan, which is what it's all about. To ensure the health and safety of our staff and the general public, to preserve the delivery of our core services, to maintain essential infrastructure systems, to maintain a balanced budget, including any use of planned drawdown of fund reserves, and to maintain a fund balance policy to ensure our fund reserves are available during times of financial distress. So this plan works us through that. There's a governance chain of command, which follows what the district already has in place with the Board of Trustees, from the President and through the officers, through the members at large, as well as to the executive team in the order in which we work through. With each roles and responsibilities identified during the plan, which every position is going to be responsible for when this goes forth. We move into the stages and the stages is our reaction and response. And there's five stages and this is where it is very similar to the Restore Illinois Plan. We begin very, at the first level, which is our sanitation stage. And this, what I would consider is our new normal, when we're back to a new normal, a very heightened sense of sanitation and disinfection. Team members very conscientious about the spread of disease. Not that we have not been, but I think we're all going to go forward with hand washing and sanitization and just an awareness. So that brings us back to normal. We then go into the exposure reduction stage. And again, this specifically increases our awareness in sanitation levels. And you'll see how all of these levels coincide with action steps in each of the areas of the district. The social separation stage, which is level three. And this is where things begin to, to shut down. We're making clearly getting team members away from one another and working, work begins to look a lot different than what it normally does. To the passive access stage, where this is what and where we've been under the current stay at home has been our passive access stage. And then the last stage in the plan is the closure stage and that we have never reached. That would be almost a full shutdown of the agency. And so right now we've been around level four, looking to come into the social separation stage once we move into the recovery stage with the governor. What we then did is we looked at each of the departments and the critical functions that we each have. And we outlined those by position and who would be responsible for carrying out those critical functions. And so those are listed within the plan. We then, which is really key and what the decision-making, a lot of it was, as we went through this, was looking at the area and activities and then mapping that out. So this is where things are open, are closed, partially opened and provides a guidance and direction. So if you look, we're in the level four right now, where the buildings are closed and it lists our buildings, how we're handling our mechanic and ranger shops, our general park access, so we've been open. Parking lots, all the way down to the various different activities. And really it maps all of the different things that you could think of that we have to make decisions on. As an example, right now, our campgrounds are closed, but as we move into the next phase, which we're hopeful by June 1st, campgrounds would begin to reopen. We're in the level four, they're no longer available. Programs were canceled with where we currently are, but then we begin to go into offering programs with group sizes less than 10. No special events, summer camps, camps were canceled unless they can be done virtually. And so you begin to see how this maps through all of the different areas. Obviously, protocols on our cleanliness and sanitization is, is there just to capture. And then the protocols, this was a lot of the decision-making so that it's a map of each of the critical functions. What is happening, who's supposed to do what? And so that everybody's clear in understanding throughout the organization. So we go through every area from the accounting department in critical operations to accounting, purchasing, IT equipment, backups, website maintenance. Different programs that we offer and registration on those programs and all the volunteer work that we have throughout the agency. Which, at what stage do we begin to, to scale down or scale up? Our leases, our capital projects, and so that maps each of those areas out. Things that we have to continue on FOIA, records retention, mail. You get it, there's a lot that goes on, on a day-to-day basis and all these things need to be mapped and continued. We then came up with a communications messaging of how we are reaching internally and externally with scripts in each of the different areas so that they're easily accessible for the different stages. And then we went through and we backstopped in looking at each of the positions. And who would backstop that position if that position, if someone was to become ill, sick, go down? How would that be handled? And what we did learn through this exercise, again, we know that we have a lot of excellent staff that can fill in, but we also identified some gaps that are depth of, of training and ability to do certain positions. There are some challenges and so that's an area that's an opportunity for us as we do succession planning and training. So we did that for each of the different divisions with that. The next was the financial resiliency and this is really important to, again, looking at the economics. And you've got the work that Andy did and that is part of that, is making a determination of, you know, how long do we anticipate this happening, increasing the monitoring of our financial forecasting and looking at cash flow, which we've been tracking at the very early onset and made decisions as we did to get out in front of this so that we could manage. And then making necessary adjustments that were needed. We then went in to look at specific things that could be done if you were looking to contain costs or increase revenue during the crisis and identified three areas of risk. The first column being low, medium to high, and then the impact. So a short-term recovery, meaning that we would look to recover in 18 months or less. And then a long-term, which is a little bit more dire here, that it's going to take longer than that to come out and therefore more drastic measures would be necessary. So again, we list a lot of different options. We have only had to implement a few of the items that were on listed, that were on the early area that we felt that we could do. For example, we froze open positions, we reduced our seasonal employees. And we have not even yet to suspend capital expenditures, we're just delaying. So again, there's a lot of other options as you look through this of yet to go that we have not yet had to implement. We then went through a risk assessment matrix to identify our operations. And so the board and our staff could understand what was being impacted as we were making decisions. And that's on a separate document that I'll bring up and show you and explain. And then all the resources that went in, there's a lot of resources that have come out on different crises and a lot of great references to be able to put together into what our pandemic plan is. Then with some necessary communication for bringing employees back into the workplace that have been out working remotely and what to do should they become ill and they should have to go backwards. And we've been working through the derma on that. And our emergency phone list, which is part of our crisis communications plan. And then all the resources that are here that helped us build this.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Can you go back up to where you had the multiple stages, just a little bit further up there? Right, right in, I, I think in this area maybe? Okay, that, that will. It, and when I read through it before, there were two things I, I saw. One was an early retirement, it was a medium and high risk category. And the other one was a voter referendum. And I just wanted to know what, what the, you know, thinking is in both those.
Okay, so basically in these two areas, what we're looking through are, these are types of things that the district may wish to look at to save dollars, right? So the early retirement program, that is through IMRF. And if that type of program, there's one way to go, then that's offered for all employees that are eligible to exit and there's costs associated with that, but that may be for some organizations, something that you would look at. So this is a longer term, again, this is like a midterm, it was classified. Should this be something that's going to be out longer? There may be with employees that are near retirement, if you incentivize them with a retirement package that maybe they would exit early and would save some dollars, you'd have some dollars to expend, so that's there. And then the voter referendum, you know, you've tried everything and so maybe you're at that last call to where we need some help and the voters to support, you know, a passage of some additional revenue to help the organization. So again, this is a longer term outlook on that one with some planning, but you're, you're really working into some crisis category if you're moving into that, that far down.
Okay, in, in either case, either in the early retirement category or the voter referendum. This is something that would have to be approved by the board in either case?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's something that just would automatically get implemented if we moved into a certain stage.
Those two require, well, the voter referendum requires any referendum ballot measure.
Right.
By the board.
Right.
Requirement through IMRF is also a requirement of a board approval.
Okay, okay, thank you.
As, as with any type of, you know, a contract that we've worked and passed through the board. You know, obviously capital projects, again, this is all, this is a guidepost. And whenever you're in a pandemic or a crisis, the board would be kept very much hand in hand as the staff is making decisions and we're continuing to move things forward. But it just kind of guides so that the board is comfortable that staff is thinking through these things. This is, and it's all kind of mapped of, of, you know, how you would naturally go through a process.
So, so it, when, in Tuesday night's meeting, you're asking us to approve this. This would become a part of our manuals and procedures. Our documents are, I don't want to say personnel policy, maybe, you know, where would you classify this and where would this be? This would be a permanent document that would be in our library.
I don't know. Yeah, I'm asking you to accept it, not approve it, just to accept that it exists. And that this become a staff guiding document, just like we have our safety manual. It's a procedural process manual for staff. So, but if there was something on this that, you know, again, from a policy decision, where we've mapped, let's say, making decisions on closing, it's a fluid document. I mean, things are subject to change as we've gone through this pandemic. So you can't, you know, you're in one lane and to keep everything rigid. But I think, you know, this is working for this scenario, but we have to have some flexibility. So it's not a policy, it's a guiding, a guidance, guiding document.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the plan itself? Okay, so I'm going to stop share here. I want to I'm going to try to blow this up because this is really small for you as well. And so this goes into the assessment that we did in each of the areas by division, department. And then identified along that matrix of where, what was happening? What change was going to be made? Was there no change? Was it going to be modified? An activity suspended or canceled? And what were we doing for that? And then what was the impact to the organization? You know, was there an insignificant risk if we were modifying it or suspending it? You know, no problem, not an issue. If it was something that we were doing, was it going to create a high risk or potential seriousness of, of even debt? So let's say we had a structure, a bridge that was in need of repair and it was going to remain open. That would might have, it's a very high risk item that we needed to move forward. That was critical to keeping things going. Or if we were to offer, continuing to offer programs, when we're not allowed to offer programs and there's a state and not be able to do that, that would be high risk for the health and safety of the, our patrons, staff. And, and then what we did is we looked at what the proposed action would be to help mitigate each of these areas. So either no change or how we would adapt to continue working through these area items. And so that was done, I'm happy to report, as we went through this exercise and with the changes. And this was envisioned for the entire district for the end of the fiscal year, that under the trajectory of our projections and what we've been seeing, that there are challenges, that we are mitigating those challenges. And there is nothing that we should at this point be, have serious concern over. You know, it's not business as usual, it's business as able. But the staff has done an amazing job and we will get through this. And we feel that this will be a temporary situation and we'll be back up and doing the best we can before too long. Any questions? So that's all I have, I'm just looking for your support on Tuesday night. And to thank the staff for all the great work that they've done to help us mitigate this fire, we're all still standing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I also have any comments or you're going to get another shot at this on Tuesday night anyway? So that's great. I'm sure Elizabeth would take any questions between now and that time if somebody wants to give her a call also. So thank you, Elizabeth. That'll bring us to 4.3, the EAV statutory rate. And I believe Andy's going to lead us off on that.
Everybody hear me again?
Yep.
See if I can do this one more time.
Can I ask, John, did Bill not, was he not able to get out of the call?
Oh, here I am.
He's here. Okay, I didn't see him on the screen, I just wanted, thank you. When we took roll, everyone was there, so unless we lost somebody, we're, we're all here.
And we've added County Board Liaison, Noack is here also.
I saw him pop up once. It was Vern's voice with Bob's picture, I was confused.
So as we, you know, first started dealing with the COVID and the pandemic and I was, you know, running the forecast, looking at the liquidity. I became pretty comfortable with the amount of property tax levy that we're going to get and not seeing that uncollectible portion, you know, doing anything really significant or drastic to us. But the, the very next thing that popped into my mind is if this is sustained at all, this, you know, we go into a serious recession, is what happens to the district, what the EAV starts to fall again. And I think that poses a greater risk to us than the idea that we may not collect a substantial portion of our property taxes. Although it's a longer term risk, it's not something we would impact us here in the first year. So the Conservation District Act limits the corporate levy to 1/10 of 1% of the EAV of the county. The corporate levy is the legal name for the levy that feeds the general fund. There's one other small levy we bring into the general fund, the social security levy is about $400,000 it's all can be used for. So the others, the other 7.4 million, that's term of the corporate levy, that's the legal name for it. This shows the McHenry County's EAV by distribution. This has been largely substantially the same for the last couple, if not several decades. We're largely a residential community, it's always been in the low, you know, 80 to 84%, I think as high as I've seen it. As of 2019, the last certified EAV is the 8 billion, 8,814 million dollars. So what does that mean? If we take that 2019 EAV and we multiply it by that legal statutory rate cap of 1/1%, you get $8,814,000, which represents the maximum levy the district could take for that corporate levy. Our 2018 levy was 7,408,000. So if you subtract our actual levy from the maximum statutory levy, there's a, a legal margin there of $1,400,000. Does that make sense to everybody? It represents a 16% this margin of that total maximum capacity. What that also says then is if the EAV should fall 16%, we'd basically be rate capped out. And that's what we're going to kind of look at here. So again, I take the 2019 EAV and I assume it decreases by 20%, which would lower the EAV to 7,51 million. Again, almost, you know, very unlikely that it could fall that much that fast, but just for the point of the exercise. Now, if we take the 1/10 of 1% rate against that lower EAV, the maximum corporate levy we could have is 7 million. levy we could have is 7,510,000. The 2018 levy was 7,408,000. So we would be exceeding that legal limit. And actually, we'd have to reduce the levy by $357,000. But it doesn't matter what PTA allows us to do, you know, the max you can take is that one tenth of the levy, whatever's happening there. This graph shows the EAV against the medium home sales. The EAV is the line in blue and medium home sales in green going from 2007 through 2019. And again, because 81% of that EAV of the county is residential, it drives the total EAV. And that's why those lines are pretty similar. But they're not perfectly aligned. And you'll notice when home values fell hard in 2008, the EAV still rose. It fell hard again, EAV rose slightly. The EAV didn't turn until the third year that the home value started to fall. And you see the same thing as it comes out of it. The home value started to turn in 2013, the EAV falls for two more years before it turns around. The reason that happens is because the EAV is based on a three-year average of assessed values. And the process of assessment lags the actual, actual market by about a year just by how they go out and get the assessments and turn them in. So when we make those, if you really want to see, you know, what the correlation would be, if you were trying to figure out how the 2019 EAV changed from 18, what you would really look at is a three year average of 16, 17, and 18. So I get the actual residential values from 16, 17, and 18, and I compare them to the actual residential values from 15, 16, and 17. And that change aligns very closely, whoops, with the actual EAV change. So this schedule actually shows you that. This is the three-year average lagged a year against the actual EAV. If you look at 2011, you see minus nine and nine, you know, minus eight, seven, minus 10, minus eight, minus nine, very close alignment there. So in that first graph we looked at, they're parallel but not perfect. It's actually statistically a correlation coefficient of 0.34, which is pretty low. Anything under 0.8, they say there's not a strong correlation to. But when I realign those and we use the three-year average and lagged a year, it's almost a perfect correlation. It's 0.97. So one being perfect, they, they correlate very well. And the reason it's important is, is if you want, again, if you want to see what the 2020 EAV is going to be, if the percentage change of the three-year average residential values for you, look at 16, 17, and 18, and that's historical, we know it. And you look at 17 and 18 and 19, again, actual values that we already know, the three-year average of the two, so we're comparing the 202,000 to the 211,000. And that change is 5.48%. So we've been doing this going all the way back to 2011, when things started turning bad and the EAV started, you know, taking its downturn. So we have a very strong confidence, I'd say within 95% confidence level, that the EAV growth for 2020 is probably going to be above 4%. Based on recent trends, you know, it might be closer to four than this 5.8, but it won't be zero, you know, it wouldn't be two or three. What would be for 2021? Again, it would be 17, 18, and 19, which we know, against 18 and 19, which we don't. So we could look at a couple of things. So how would the EAV change in 21 if residential values are unchanged? So let's assume there's no decline this year, but the housing market stays flat. So actual median values for 2019 were 218,000. So I'm holding them flat. And then I look at this three-year average, it's 217. And you'd still see, you should see a slight increase in the 2020 EAV. And then the question is, how much would they have to fall in order to make the 2021 EAV fall by 16% or 15.9, which would basically bring the district right up to that maximum statutory rate gap? And again, that number, it has to fall by 54% in one year. It's, you know, improbable. But most they ever fell during the housing crisis for the five-year decline was a little bit less than 12%. So, you know, clearly this isn't going to happen. It's not something we have to worry about in 20 or 21. But as you look at what did happen.
Andy?
Yes.
Question, when you say 2021, are you talking 20 and 21 fiscal year or?
Well, these are, every year I'm using is calendar year, which is also a year.
Okay. But when you're referring to 2021, you're not referring to our fiscal, you're actually just talking about calendar years here.
Calendar year, right, which is the levy year, which is the EAV. So if I was trying to find out what was going to happen to the EAV in 21, I'm looking at what's actually going to happen 18, 19, and 20. As I said, three-year average lagged year. So it gives us a pretty good ability to predict, you know, year out and get kind of close to. And then the question is, is there a chance we could hit our rate cap in 2021? And the answer is no. For that to happen, homes would have to fall this year by 54%. And that's
Right.
An improbable thing.
Okay. Thank you. If that happens, we're going to have a lot bigger problems.
Yes. Absolutely. But if you look back to the 08 fallout, we're over a sustained, you know, moderate, you can call it, I mean, it wasn't moderate, but seven, not, you know, 50% a year, but eight, nine percent a year, the average probably a little over eight. You have a 40% fall in home values, 39%. This is the medium home values. They're, we're recovering nicely here. And they drove, this is the EAV now, they obviously drove it down 34%, lagging a couple of years in that process. And what happened to the district during that time? So this is the district's corporate levy, calendar year 2011. This is the total general fund levy. The num, the bars are the same because the dollar amounts are the same, because at that time, the district only had the one corporate levy in the general fund. This red line represents the EAV falling and the district's maximum corporate levy falling right with it. So back in 11, we saw this happening and we were able to predict where this was going to go. Again, 2012, we didn't raise the levy, those two, those two columns match, total general fund equal to total corporate levy. As you went to 2013, the EAV kept falling and we were rate capped out. So while we collected 7.3 million here, we only collected 7.2 million in 2013. We had to reduce the levy. And in 14, it fell again. Now, when we were here, we knew it was going to fall again because this was made up of 11, 12, and 13, which was historical. We had that information. What we didn't know is that they were going to change the Illinois property code to say you could now have a separate levy for your social security needs, expenses without going through a referendum. So now for the first time, you see the total general fund taxes higher than this blue bar, which is just the corporate levy. And the difference is this social security levy. And again, that can only be used for social security expenses. But what it did is it gave us levy margins. So now the total general fund is above what was, you know, the legal about the corporate, but the corporate still falls below it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So Andy, if, if when we, we reach our cap, meaning one tenth of 1% of the assessed evaluation, then they split out the social security issue as a separate charge, what can you put a percentage on that? Is it, how many basis points is the, is the county or the district allowed for its social security expenditures above the one tenth of 1% that were allowed now for the general fund?
It's a really good question. So once that split out was made, it's permanent. So that's social security levy ever since 2014, we levied it every year, as you'll see. And the good news is there is no rate cap. There is no limit on the rate for social security. The exception is you can only use it for social security expenses. So that's all we could ever use it for. So as we go forward, it's been there ever since. And you can see in 15, Bill, we're still against that rate, rate cap on the corporate, the blue line, we're right up against it. We couldn't take it all. The other thing that's interesting is when we got the relief, let me back to supplements. When we got the relief in 14, we could have started with 7.3 million and grown that corporate levy to well over 7.4. I think it was about 150,000. But again, the board said no, and they held it flat. All they did is get us back whole to 2011. So again, going forward, the social security levy will always be there. It can only be used for social security expenses. In 17, you start to see now for the first time, there's some margin there. As the EAV moves away, and our, our levy is still flat at 7.3, you know, and then we had the increase in 18 of 7.4, but then we had to reduce the corporate again in 19. So now that's where that margin comes from. Did I answer your question, Bill?
Well, yes, I understand your answer, but you still weren't able to give me like a, a basis point. So if one, you know, one tenth of 1% is 10 basis points, how many basis points are we allowing for the social security? Is it one basis point? Is it then point 11? Or is it two? Is it, so the total is point 12? It's just a question. It's not a, you know, it just helps me to compare apples and oranges, I guess.
Yes. Try to look at it real quick, but this is acting up on me. It, it would, you know, it's, it's.
Andy, you can tell me next Tuesday. I don't, I don't, it's, I don't want to, you know, get off into the weeds, but you, you see how my mind thinks.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I can give you the answer as soon as we're done here, Bill. Just take a second for that.
Thank you. It's a very good presentation. It's helping me understand this better.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. So that, so what I did then, the question is, what would happen if we took the same rate declines that actually took place on going forward from 2010 through 2012 on the EAV? And we assume that the corporate levy remains unchanged. So we're not growing it year after year. So it's just stuck at that 18 level. And again, I'm for showing the 19 here, but it's actually 18 amount. And what you would see would happen if we take the actual declines that occurred from 2010, 11, and 12, and we put them in for 22, 23, and 24, again, without raising the corporate levy, we're rate capped out at the end of 2023. And in 2024, if it repeated what happened in, you know, beginning in 2010, we'd have to reduce the corporate levy by 339. If I played this out, the other two years of the decline, this would approach close to a million dollars of required reduction. Again, the good news is there's lots of time here, you know, because they use that three-year averaging, you know, we'll see what happens in 20, we'll see what happens in 21, you know, but we'll be reacting to that. So there's, there's time to see what's going to happen. And then I just did it again, using the same rates of decline for the EAV, but this time I grew the levy by 2%. What happens is it accelerates it by a year. And really, you're capped out here in 2022. The increase from 21 to 22 is only, I'm sorry, you're capped out in 23, but the increase between 22 and 23 is only 40 grand. That's why this says zero. So you have a little bit of margin, but really you're maxed out right there. And then again, if it fell again in 24, you know, you'd give up all the percentage you took plus some. So it'd be $834,000 reduction. The good news is, you know, right now, they're not expecting, you know, hard home value reductions. Zillow recently, just even this week, is showing a 2% to 3% reduction is all they anticipate. They show it pretty short. They do show, you know, a market reduction in sales volumes, but right now they think the prices will somewhat sustain through that for the most part. And again, you can, you know, it depends on where you look because you can, you can see some pretty negative things as well. Just question or comment?
No, very good, Andy.
All right. And then just quickly in summary. So again, this won't impact the 20 levy, but a sustained housing decline in 20 and 21 could impact the 23 and 24 levies, depending on how much it declines, you know, in each of those years. I throw this out there, it's not for discussion tonight. I don't think we'll be, you know, even talking about it this year, but the idea is, you know, is there a way to get legislative relief or a change that if we were starting to see this becoming an issue, we could move to, you know, be released from that rate cap? And there's, you know, lots of different ways to look at that. And then again, obviously to continue to monitor the housing market very closely. Questions, comments?
Well, comment I, comment I have is that you're going to have at least a year to two years to react, which is, you know, a lot of time to put together a different type of budget and see where the, where the district is going if, if any of those bad situations occur, which is very nice compared to what other taxing bodies are going through right now because they've taken a very quick hit. So it is, I know we're sometimes not happy with the way we're funded, but it is more stable and you have a better chance to react than what, what most forms of government are using right now. Anyone else have any comments? Oh. Hey, thanks, Andy. Very thorough again. And thanks for your time. Okay, that's going to bring us to 4.4, review of fiscal year 20, 2021 project list. Elizabeth? I don't, I think this was just put out for information. Wasn't really there for a discussion if I'm correct on that.
Okay. Am I muted here? Thank you.
Oh, you're not.
Yeah, you're back.
I'm back. Sorry about that. Silent pictures here. So yes, we had updated, finished the year on the new project list that you saw last year. We submitted it again. So were there any discussion items? And then with that, we also provided you what would be the fiscal year 21 project list. And so you had 2020 and the new list, which you'll get a full build out as we get through the first quarter. So I provided it, it was requested. So any questions?
What's, what is your anticipation of what we're going to do on Tuesday, Elizabeth, with that list? Anything or nothing? Or just it's there for information?
Yeah, it's provided. I'm happy to answer any questions. You can see the projects that were budgeted last year, where they are at in the budget for fiscal year 2021. As you saw in the earlier presentation, those projects continue to move forward. And when we get through the first quarter, so in July, there'll be details in that report, but it'll come back to the board. We show that, we show that report quarterly. But I provided it as requested. Just to answer if there were any questions about the report format, what's on there? So no actions required.
Okay. And, and then the, okay, the, the new projects list, are we going to get into that? At all?
Any questions that you have? If you want to pull it up, we can do that. It basically takes the projects that are in our budget fiscal year 2021.
Okay.
I can do that here.
The only, the only one that I saw that was new is the tunnel on Route 14, and that kind of surprised me. Why is that on there?
I think we just placed it on there because we have identified, as we previously discussed, that it's got showing some repairs. There's no dollars budgeted for it at all. So I'd have to pull that up here. So. Where?
It's way to the right.
27, number 20.
Nothing here. There's nothing here. I just parked it here just so I didn't lose sight of this. Again, this was a draft document. It hasn't presented.
No, no, I appreciate that. But I just, I guess, the only reason I'm asking that is we went through multiple years with the city of Crystal Lake determining who has ownership and who had responsibility when the grants were given by the state and government, federal government, who signed off with the department, McDOT, and, you know, all the different entities in the state of Illinois. And I just, you know, it's a public document. I don't believe we have ownership of it. So I question why it's on our project list. And the board, you know, didn't talk about this, you know, going on there. So I have some apprehension about having that on the, everything else I don't have a problem with. It's not our property. It's not our project. And we don't have ownership. So I don't know why we want to keep it on there. It could lead to, you know, if somebody in Crystal Lake sees that and says, oh, you're assuming responsibility. That's all.
No, that's, it's a good point. I think we, we had offered, we didn't follow back up with where this was going to be. There's no dollars budgeted. It's just that we had staff out there and noted some concerns. And we're working to get some details. And so there may be some additional costs if we. so there may be some additional costs if we were to look at that. But I'm happy if the board wants to remove it. I'm happy to just hide it and, oof, it's gone. It's gone.
I, at this point, I, I don't want, you know, it to be on our list, and people assume that we are now the keepers of that, that whole area. It took us a long time to try to get to some kind of resolution, which never happened. And so that's just my feeling. Whatever the board feels, you know, it's, it's a board decision. But again, the list was put together with the board having a discussion about those items on there in the, in this last year when we came up with the list. And again, it would be the board discussion with this list. So that's my only concern.
Right. And this list, it mapped everything that's in the budget, and if there's zero dollars in it, either you identified with funding, and on that one, there was nothing there, because it's not in the budget. It's not planned for. It was just one of the things that we were working as a staff, that we were going to come back to the board and have a further conversation on, you know, at the appropriate time.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have, any other projects they're interested in discussing at this time? All right. I don't, I don't see anybody speaking up, so I think we can move on. Right. We're going to move on to the budget timeline. And who's going to take that one? Elizabeth or, I think I have you. Oh, no, Andy, is Andy going to walk us through that?
Yeah, let me put it up here. Let's see here. Do I do that? Do you see it up on your screen or no?
Not yet. They do have it printed.
Second here, I'm trying to figure out what happened here. I lost my screen with everybody.
Yeah, me too. So, someone must have hit clear.
We could see you, Anne.
I can see your faces, but all of the data, the stuff that we have running down the side is all gone. So I'm not sure.
So we're waiting, Anne, when we were going through all the things that were a risk to the district, did you feel your retirement should have been at a higher risk rating than what it was?
I'm not answering that.
I, I think it should have been a high risk.
At one point, it was a high risk.
It was a high risk. Yes, it was. All right. Do you see the budget timeline?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy, do you want to take it?
I can't see it from your screen. I don't have it up in front of me, so.
Okay, does everybody else see this?
Uh, no, now it's down to nothing.
Now.
There you go.
Now you see?
I can't, I just can't read it.
Okay, let me see if I can.
Invest in a pair of glasses, Andy, even I could read it.
Oh, that's too tiny. All right.
Big giant binocular glasses.
All right. Just in brief, we put together a budget timeline based on last year's accelerated budget, and we would consider obviously keeping to that new change. It was very effective, and we were very thankful that we had our budget approved before we hit, before we had the pandemic to deal with. It was great to have us behind us. Otherwise, we would have been still in the process, and who can imagine that? So we're very thankful for that. With that, we're where we're at now, and having some discussions and need to begin planning. If we're to meet the deadline, as we were last year, there are a couple things that do need to happen from a critical date point to, for that to occur. We need to talk about the levy options, which would be what the board is anticipating to do with the levy this September. And so we are hopeful to have that discussion with you in June. Then from there, be able to get some guiding direction in July, and so that we can begin preparing those worksheets and send that out to the staff. We do need time to prepare an update to our capital asset management plan and our natural capital asset management plan. And we would like to do a discussion, a full discussion on the Pechan installment in the camp, in the natural camp at the August meeting. Again, the staff needs time. We've got the audit happening and a variety of other things to plan for that. And then from there, being able to begin working on the tentative budget for the board to have a preview of what this all looks like in November. And then Andy will go back in and finalize everything from all the material that's been given to the executive team to review. And we will package that up so that we can send out the tentative budget in January, right after the holidays. This is where it changes, because in order to meet deadline, we have to move up the January meeting a week earlier, so we can make a thirty-day public hearing timeframe for a February approval and meeting. And because our budget would need to be approved by you guys in, at the February meeting, and that way we can then present it to the county in March, and that way we'll align with our fiscal twenty twenty-two budget year, which starts on April first. So any changes, thoughts of where we have this laid out, I guess? Does this meet your approval, or would you like to see changes?
The only, I'll ask John. When we had the page-by-page meeting where we went through the budget line by line, page by page, would there be any consider, I know we get the tentative budget back in November, is it? Highlights from tentative budget, I think that's in October, Elizabeth, is, if you can go up a little, is that where we?
November nineteenth.
Yep. Okay. What, what do we have before that? I thought the board got something there? No?
Yeah, the first time you'll see something is in November.
November nineteenth, okay. Which was, and, and we, I'm trying to remember when we had our review. That was in like February, wasn't it? Because we were waiting for the package with all the words and backup data.
I would have, between the tentative and the final, was it before the tentative? If it wasn't tentative, it was January.
Okay, it was a tentative. I'm, I'm just thinking, after having done this once now, and if we could have had it a little earlier, I think it would have helped us understand it better and, you know, maybe had the process work better. Other people could join in. John, you know, Pat, Bill, Dave, Lynn, Linda, you know, we sat there and went through the budget page by page. If we had the ability to do that a little sooner, because I know there was some apprehension about what if we made significant changes, the impact it would have on Andy and his staff to have to go back and, you know, change, change things and so forth. I just bring it up. First time we did it, we thought perhaps, I remember the comment, if we could have had this maybe one month earlier, would have been a little bit better for us as a board to understand it. And that, so I just throw it out there. That's all.
I, I think maybe the sta, I think maybe the staff could do as, as they have in the past and not try to push them any further, but we could maybe look at it in a rougher form as it is at that time and do some more of the page-by-page or work with whatever we have. And maybe we would at that time take a little more active role than we did on the reading, and the staff would maybe get a clearer picture at that time, not to have to push them any further or any faster, just we would be involved of the reading a little quicker.
Right.
I, I think that would probably be helpful for everyone.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Please do.
I think what we presented in November, and that's kind of the same alignment we had here. We had the budget done for all of the funds, including the narrative, except for the general fund. We didn't have the narrative for the general fund, but we had all the other pieces of it, all the numbers and all the detail available by November. And I think that's very tight, but reasonable, you know. Again, the, the hope would be, obviously, that the board is very comfortable with the direction while ahead of then, you know, so we're just hearing out your direction and putting the details together. If, if we were to back it up more, you, you know, you'd be asking staff to compile it in, you know, July, August, I guess, well, really August, you know, and so now you're way ahead. Who knows what's going to happen, you know?
Well, you know, my recollection was we had, we had two meetings. One was to go through the cap, you know, capital investment, and that, that was one month. And then we spent another month later on going through the whole budget along with the, all the dialogue and all the backup information. And, and I was just, you know, I, if we could smooth it out somewhat, you know, next year, you know, because it was our first time doing it, and I'm just throwing it out. There's some opportunities for the board and, and, you know, staff to kind of work it together somehow, you know, to improve what we did. And, and again, you know, if, if last year is the best we're ever going to get, then that's what it is, you know, based on timing. So, okay.
Can I just, I'm just gonna, it's hard for me to know. My earbuds are a little bit funky. So, you know, Andy makes a good point, and I had kind of forgotten about that, but the, the preliminary numbers were available. And maybe it's not so much what staff is providing, but maybe as a board recognizing that that information is already out there and making more of a determined effort to work together at that time, as opposed to really changing anything that they're doing. Because we did have, we did have those numbers earlier on. I don't remember everything that came, you know, I don't remember all the sequencing that went on, but maybe it's more of us making, you know, a decision to get together and talk more about what we're looking for. Because I think this seems like it's rushed. Is it, is it faster simply because where the days are falling this year? I was hoping it would settle down this year.
Yeah, the January, between the January and February, due to the holidays and where the months were landing, it accelerated it.
Okay.
And so that, just by a couple changes, makes a big difference of how it's being pushed. So really, from Andy and my discussion, it requires, not only does he already always work over the holidays here, but this all has to be packaged up. I mean, by the time you're getting November, we're really at the last stretches. And so that's why those highlights, and then we really need to go back in, and we're doing all the packaging. So hopefully, with this, that November meeting, and then you're going to look at the camp, the proposal was all of that at the August meeting, right? And, and you've got the levies set, and depending on what you do, clearly, I mean, we can, we can talk back to you, but we gotta take it back, you know, and do the work on it.
Dave Brant has his hand raised.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Anne.
Yeah, so my recollection, though, is we got a draft from Andy, and there was no comments. And then we went further on, and then all of a sudden, a lot of comments came on. And then we went page by page. I think we had everything plenty of time. Even going page by page didn't work, because three people voted against the budget. So I don't know how getting it early is going to change anything, especially that puts the, ties the hands of staff. And I don't want to see that. So I'm done.
You're done, as in saying this is fine, Dave, that this, this timeframe is good, you think?
I think the timeframe's fine.
Okay, good. I think so, too. I think, I think the staff will have had more experience, the board will have had more experience. I, I look forward to it. Of course, we're dealing in a different time now, so nothing, not everything is positive. And the fact that we don't know how our lives will be running exactly by then, hopefully we'll be back to somewhat normal, whatever that is. But, yeah, I, I, I really appreciate the time that's put into this, and it looks like a, like a well-planned-out way of working on this. So, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
No.
I'm actually.
Okay.
No, I agree. Yeah, no, I kind of agree. I think the schedule looks good. If we really do want to, my earbuds broke. I had to switch them out, sorry. Um, I, I really do think that it looks good. It already is, it's interesting to me that the, just the way the dates fall out, that we're feeling rushed again this year, when I thought we had, we accelerated by three months last year, and they really, staff really stepped up and got us the materials in time. Maybe we could be working as a board and making those opportunities available, because I think we did have access to the information. So maybe we could be looking at what we can be doing. So I'm fine with the schedule like it is.
Okay, good. Thank you. I think that's the feedback you needed, isn't it? Andy and Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that. John, I had, under the pandemic, we had two other items for discussion, and unfortunately, five items. So whenever you're ready, we'll move the others and circle back to that on the.
Now would be as good a time as any.
Okay. So we had two additional items. One was, we had received a request to look at putting hand sanitizers in our privies. And so you had a memo on that. Currently, we do not have hand sanitizers in those locations. So we provided you the cost. John, anything you want to add for operations team?
Oh, I gotta take him off.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The, I think that the real point that needs, everybody needs to understand is, if, if you guys said to do this, we probably couldn't. We probably couldn't get the product right now. I'm assuming supply and demand will settle out on that, and eventually we will be able to get the product. And the other thing about that, I think that's, even if you, even if we could get the product, putting it out there now would just ensure vandalism and theft. We wouldn't hold on to it for long. So those are the, those are probably two key points. It is amazing how that stuff became more valuable than gold a few weeks ago, so.
So your recommendation is to not do this, John, or what's your recommendation?
Yeah, my, my recommendation is not. And, and it's, it's from the standpoint of, of, it's, it's, it's a new normal for people to carry a hand sanitizer with them if, and so it's just like bug screen, or bug spray and sunscreen, you know, when you come to the parks, also bring that stuff as well. If I had seen, if I had seen, you know, five of the six other entities come back and say, yeah, we've been providing it for years, I would have said, okay, we're behind the time. We need to get, we need to get it out there. And, and so therefore, I, I thought we were kind of right in the middle of where people were on those things. In fact, only two entities provide it regularly, and one had it in spots where, you know, they had playgrounds and things like that. So I didn't feel we were, we were out there alone on it by not providing it. And again, it's just another cost. And this is not a, an agency that has, you know, oodles of resources, you know, new and new and new resources should be a new cost to the agency. So for those reasons, I was like, okay, let's just not implement something like that right now.
I, I think you're right in the fact that almost everyone carries it with them now. I think probably you needed it out there more a year ago than you need it now, because everyone has it with them now. And the few people that don't are the ones that are going to steal it from you.
Bill.
I'm in agreement with both Johns. And I would, but I would ask that, or inquire, I know we're doing things with signage relative to, you know, proper distancing and precautions and, and so forth. So maybe this is just somehow can be included as a reminder to the public, you know, to bring your own personal handset, you know, sanitation supplies. So we just make it an educational issue rather than a providing the equipment ourselves and then having to, to deal with vandalism and theft.
Thank you.
Lynn still, Lynn has her hand up also.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that that's great, and that's a good idea, Bill. And I know that the staff is already doing that in terms of the, on the web. I think it was important because it's part of the protocol in reopening some of the standards that have been put out by the governors, you know, kind of reopening and what's required that we at least look at it. So I appreciate staff investigating that and coming up with the cost estimate. And I'm perfectly fine with going with the recommendation. I just appreciate the fact that if, if it ever came up, we can say we've looked into it, and this is the situation, and that we tried to, you know, be in keeping with what they were trying to do. If that makes sense to me.
I, I will chime in and agree also.
Vice President Brand has his hands up.
Yeah, I just like, I'm confused now, John. I read your memo, and it sounds like you have already purchased stations for hand sanitizer at Brookdale, Lost Valley Visitor Center, and Prairie View. And the. Prairie View. And the question is, is to provide hand sanitizer for our remote toilets? So can you clarify, please?
Yes, you're, you're reading that correctly, Dave. The, the district almost immediately decided that the new normal would be needing it in the, in the, in the centers, in the three centers. And that was, I had several reasons and part of which was protect staff. Part of it was because we knew that we would have kids coming in there, you know, et cetera, those kinds of things. We just knew that the exposure would be a little greater and that I think people would be looking for hand sanitizers in those situations. So therefore, we thought that was warranted in that case. So we went right, right ahead and did that. But to go ahead and put them in the, in the pit toilets, in a spot where I know that they're going to be, there are going to be no eyes, no staff eyes on them, they will disappear and be vandalized at this point. So that was kind of the split of the recommendation.
Deal, John. Oh, I gotta just say that I agree with having the sanitizer in our three main buildings. But dealing with our caretakers for Donna's mom, we can't get the stuff, but our lovely delightful caretakers keep filling their own personal with ours. So even though they're sweet and lovely and they're very caring, I agree. Don't put them in our remote toilets, just in our main facilities. And I, that's my end of my comments. Thank you.
Hey, very good.
Carolyn has her hand up.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm trying to, trying to do that protocol. Yeah, no, I think that, that kind of, again, the district has been a little bit, it's been in front of the curve by looking into that early, John. I mean, because the governors, the reopening requirements are all establishments need to have these things at the entrances and exits of all of their buildings, which was what brought into question, where do we need to have them? Right? So you guys were already on top of that and the question just came out, you know, what is the cost? What is the feasibility of having them in more remote locations? So just about everything you guys have done so far has been ahead of the curve. So it's been great.
Hey, Elizabeth, I think we've kind of got a consensus here unless you want more information. I think you can move on to your next, your next point that we skipped over.
Yeah, so the other one that was skipped over, there was a request to place the emergency closing policy back for review discussion. As you recall, when we started the pandemic, we came forward and made the board aware that there was a policy statement about should we have to close our buildings for an emergency, could be for a natural emergency, a fire, a flood, a tornado, whatever, a blizzard, a pandemic. Basically, it states that if we have to shut down the facility, if a decision's made to shut down and to send our employees home, it's considered paid leave. And so everybody was given that. And I guess I'm just bringing it back forward for discussion. The policy, obviously, we didn't use that. There is a potential, you know, as we move forward, we've moved team members into remote type of environments, but there could be a situation where, let's say, a fire occurs or we get a contamination and we have to shut down, we brought people back together and we need to clean out the facility for a couple days or send people out. There may be some that can't work remotely or whatever. So I can't think of all the scenarios, but I think it's there. So again, it was asked to be brought up. So President Scotty, do you want to, your thoughts?
I guess, I asked Elizabeth about this because when we first got into the whole closing the district down and having as many people work remotely as possible and our operations people, sites and fleet were going to stay in the field, that made all the sense in the world. The policy 7.27, I believe is the number, Elizabeth, talks about an emergency situation and the personnel, personnel policy. It was written at a time when there was never considered a pandemic type situation. It was written for flood, fire, snow, an event that would happen and be perhaps a short period of time, I'm gonna say no more than, you know, three, four, five days tops, not to send everybody home for months as, as was happened here. Had we not been considered a essential service by the powers to be, national and state political organizations or government entities, we had the potential of what if the district, like the state parks, were not open and everybody was not going to be able to work? What would happen then? And under, under the current personnel policy, it says an emergency and it was deemed an emergency, but I don't think anybody intended that if we had to send our employees home for two or three months, that they would be paid to be home for two or three months. So I think that policy needs to be modified to identify situations like we're currently going through, where if we were to be sitting on the other side of the fence, where we weren't able to keep everybody employed, what would we have done then? So right now, our policy says we'd send everybody home and pay them in an emergency, but the emergency never envisioned endemic type situation. So my, my recommendation is that the board take a look at this with staff to modify that, the terminology and the personnel policy to identify. Any comments?
Yes, Vice President Brant has his hand raised?
Yeah, my concern is, Vern, even with what you said, and I agree that it was written before the pandemic. But if there is an emergency, why would we want to penalize the employee for something that was beyond their control? And if you, like you said, it was going on for months, then that employee all of a sudden is without income for months. I, I don't understand, I don't understand why you would want to do that to an employee. And that's my comments.
Okay. The, the employees are here to provide a service for, for a pay. And if they're sent home or furloughed or whatever terminology you want to use, they're not, and they can't perform their work. So why, why would we be paying people to sit at home when they're not performing a function that they were hired for?
That's, that's, I think that's wrong.
I got a question, Dave. I guess that, I, I agree with Vern. I mean, look how many, look how many people are, are laid off. The conservation district isn't a fantasy land. I mean, you don't work, you don't get paid. I mean, that's the way I look at it. There's unemployment.
Did Bill have his hand up also?
Yeah.
Yep, sorry.
You know, I think it's very difficult to write a document that covers all, you know, future situations. I think, you know, we're all sensitive to issues of, what is the responsibility of the government, federal government, state government? What are the, what should be the responsibilities of the individual as far as, you know, prudent financial management? I think we have to be very careful about giving our talented employees a package of benefits that many taxpayers don't have in their own employment in the private sector. If you want to write something in, you know, that limits this to, you know, three days, you know, a certain period of time until the dust settles and we can see what the next step is going to be, I have no problem with that. But if you leave it open ended that, yes, you're an employee and until things are quote back to normal, you're going to draw your 40 hour a week wage and you're not working for it. I, I think that's, that's more than we can prudently provide and more than we could explain to the average homeowner who probably doesn't have that coverage in his own employment situation. Thank you.
Secretary Kimmel has her hand up.
Yeah, no, I, I think this is a difficult situation and I think Bill makes a good point. You can't plan for everything that comes up. And this, and Vern's point also is that this is something that's, you know, when these things were written, you know, it was a snow, you know, it was, you know, bad snow weather, it was bad weather. It, so, and I have a feeling that personnel departments all over the place are trying to come to terms with what it is that they need to be doing. So, you know, looking at this further is certainly a reasonable thing to do. Bear in mind, you put people on unemployment, you're going to pay for half of it anyway. You know, as an employer, right? And so there's a lot of things that have to go into that. If you look back at the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, I mean, that was some people, the people that were subjected to that were, what was it, employers with less than 500, public employers, and it goes on with the, with the different things that were required in terms of providing pay for an extended period of time because of the crisis. So, you know, it does, it's a balance of what can we afford to do, what is, you know, the right thing to do to take care of your employees. And, and we've talked about this before, about what the taxpayers are facing. There is a really wide range of what taxpayers are facing. You know, when we were talking about if they're not working, we shouldn't pay them, I knew of private companies who were saying, take the time you need, go home, get your offices set up, or take care of your families. And when you're ready, get back on board. They didn't lose pay for that. So, you know, who do we identify as the model taxpayer to, to model our, our policy around? This is a very difficult situ, question. So I do think that, that with everything that has happened with this pandemic, employers are having to reevaluate their policies on almost every level. So that's fine to look at it further. Okay, I'm fine with doing that.
It, it seems to me like if we put about a timeframe of about a week on it, that would give everyone a little time to settle in. And that doesn't mean that whoever the current board would be at that time wouldn't extend it past that. After a week, they'd be able to look at the situation and maybe they'd want to extend it. Maybe they wouldn't, depending on the finances of the, of the board or the district at that time, depending on what they see the future to be. Maybe, maybe things would be so bad, you could see in several months, nobody's coming back because things are that terrible. I'd hate to imagine that, but that's a possibility. So it, it seems like putting a timeframe of a week on that would, would give the board and the management team, whoever would be at that time, some time to evaluate and then extend it if they cared to or, or deal with things as they came. So I would go with a recommendation of about a week on, on that. And then we, the board and management could, could respond. Does anyone else have any comment towards that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I just jumped in. Sorry. Okay, well, I, yeah, I mean, that, that might, that might be reasonable. I know in a lot of these situations, I mean, taking time to find out what other people are doing is also helpful because sometimes they're doing something that you didn't think about. Or, you know, having staff, you know, get in touch with different agencies. I mean, we, you know, you had Andy sitting at different roundtables where that happens all the time, Jenny getting on the phone and talking with other HR managers. What are you guys talking about? What is, you know, what are your boards thinking? You know, we might be reasonable, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure where to go at this point.
Well, in this case also, the federal government gave us some guidelines after a short period of time also to, to, to work with. So you might even get some, some, something from the federal or, or the state government telling us this is what you absolutely have to do or need to do. So I think that week would be, would give us time to have everybody else react also. But yeah, when, when tire hands, if the, if the handbook or if the policy said, you know, indefinitely, we'd be locked in. That seems too open ended to me.
Justy Cook has got his hand raised.
Is our, is our legal counsel on the call?
He is, but let me unmute him.
Does he have any, as he listens to us, you know, sort of talk about this and try to figure out a path forward? Does, does he have any advice?
Hi, Bill, Andrew here. Hopefully you guys can hear me.
Good to see you.
You too.
Whiskers.
Thank you. So it's less of a, less of a legal question and more of a policy question, obviously, but I, I do agree that in these situations, it's impossible. I mean, you know, if, if we would have had this meeting three months ago, nobody would have ever brought up the topic of a pandemic like this and a two, three, four month furlough situation. So to, to the points that other trustees have brought up, it is difficult to write a policy that addresses every single situation fathomable, right? There's always going to be exceptions and nuanced things that come up. So I, I do think there is some validity to the concept of coming up with some finite period of time. And I don't know if that's a week, if that's two weeks, if it's less, if it's more, something that, that works for the board, but it buys you time to let people adjust to whatever the current situation is, kind of calm down, take a deep breath, let things kind of settle and then evaluate it and decide. I mean, there's, if you decided on a week, on two weeks, whatever the number, there would be nothing to stop you from saying, okay, we've evaluated it and we think it's appropriate to extend it for two weeks, or we think it's appropriate to do it on a week by week. I mean, you could always do that. But I would agree that if you commit yourself to an open ended policy like this, you can't retroactively take these benefits away from employees. So you guys would be stuck. And in a situation like this, you could have significant liability or exposure in an extended shutdown. So I, I do think from sort of a policy perspective, coming up with some number that works for you, where you can say, okay, if something terrible happens, we know that, you know, for a week or two, the employers are going to be okay. We can all take our breaths, we can talk to staff, we can see what other agencies are doing, we can see if there's any guidance from state, local, federal, authorities and kind of regroup and figure out how best to respond to whatever that situation is.
I appreciate your comments. I think they're very helpful.
President Scotty has his hand raised and so does Lynn.
Okay. Who first?
I don't know. I was typing.
Okay. I, I think it's that the policy manual was written for a specific reason. And I think this has made us aware that there's reasons that come up that we never anticipated. It has happened. We can't bury our head in the sand. I think it needs to be added and addressed accordingly. That's all I'm asking to do. Because the way it's written today, I, I can't agree with that policy for this situation personally. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I agree. I think that things are like, everyone has mentioned here, Bill, Vern, Andrew, these things were written at a time when this, the idea of a pandemic wasn't even, you know, thought about. But just this goes to Andrew. Then in the case of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, if we did have it down for a week, obviously, wouldn't that take precedence anyway? I mean, aren't we right now obligated under that particular act?
I mean, it will, it will depend on the relief. As you'll recall, it took some time from, when the pandemic came out, the time shutdown started to be implemented. It took some time for the government to get together and figure out what, what the package was going to be. And then we knew agencies were scrambling in that week to two weeks when they knew the effective date was coming. Some reacted quickly. So it, it would depend on the situation. Some people, and so there was, there was a lag there, right? I think like we had like two weeks there. I think like we had like two weeks there. So, in that case, let's just say your number was two weeks. The two weeks would have carried your employees from kind of when this thing was announced as on the horizon to when it took effect. The two weeks would have carried them to that date then. In this case, the Families First Act would have kicked in. And then you guys would have had time to figure out, "Do we do more? Do we, do we stop? Is the, is the federal stim off? Is there other stuff on the horizon? What do we do there?" So, it, it would depend on that.
I don't have a hand button to, to put up here. No, I think it's an excellent discussion. And as you recall, when we got it forward, we had flagged as a staff that it was open-ended and was looking for and up to two weeks to be able to examine, you know, what we would be able to do on each scenario, not knowing what a scenario could be. It could be one day, it could be two days. It may not be a pandemic where there's any federal relief. It may be just something that's local to us through a catastrophic event of a tornado that came through and took down a building. And then giving time to pivot and, you know, get staff in other buildings or working remotely or whatever that would look like. So, I think flexibility is good, but I do think there needs to be some end cap on it, so it's not unlimited. And, you know, if you want a recommendation or a draft of policy, I'm happy to go back and work with the team and council and then bring a first draft back up for review.
Again, I, I just want to make sure that people don't misinterpret what I'm saying. What our current policy says, I have no problem with. If we have a hurricane, if we have a tornado, we have a major snowstorm to keep people from being able to work for a week. If we have a fire, that's perfectly normal. People can't come to work because we can't let them come to work because our facilities are not functioning. That's on us, not on them. And, and the policy covered that correctly. What I'm saying is something like this that could go on three months now, and who knows if we have another three-month event in the fall and could winter. You know, people would not possibly be working for six months. That's, to me, that's a whole different scenario. And as stewards of the taxpayer dollar, that's the responsibility we have to take a look and make sure that our policies, you know, give the taxpayer their due. Thank you.
Okay, Carolyn has, Carolyn has raised her hand. We have a problem with Treasure Henning has lost internet connection. Just so you know, he is not with us at the moment. And here he's back on now, but no audio at the moment. So, I'm gonna let Lynn go ahead.
Want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, no, Vern, I think that, okay. All right, well, I, no, I agree with that. I, I understand what you're trying to do, Vern. I think that's, that's fine. I think that's totally appropriate. And even with an emergency like, you know, fire or whatever, the facility's down, you know, having some kind of guidelines with, with regards to those isn't such a bad thing either, though. So, I would feel more comfortable if it's okay with everybody else on the board, rather than come up with, you know, maybe an arbitrary, arbitrary timeframe. I would probably feel a little bit more comfortable with what Elizabeth is saying and have them come up with some kind of a draft for us of a policy to address these concerns that we could be reviewing at a, you know, sooner rather than later because it's important to do. But if that's okay with everybody else, I think I would rather, I'd like to hear what they have to, what they come up with, I guess.
I agree. I agree. Anybody else?
I don't know. Is John on?
No, he, he doesn't have audio connected. I saw his internet, I saw him freeze, so I know it's his internet access. Okay, Bill Cook?
Yes, well, I, I mean, I think it's always better to work from a, a document. And so, you've seen, I guess, the first draft. It's, we're, we're responding to it. We've learned from the last couple of months a little bit how some of this is playing out under these circumstances. But, you know, you can't foresee every possibility. I do think that there are enough legal ramifications of this that our legal counsel should be involved in, in some of the reviewing the language. And if he wants to offer ideas, I'm sure they would be appreciated. But yes, Elizabeth, you and the staff, you know, come back to us and, and, you know, it'll be, it'll be another useful discussion. And I wouldn't set a timetable as to when we should have it. I wouldn't, I would, I am in favor of some type of restricted timeframe as far as the commitment of the district to provide full salary support. But that's, which could be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. John's not back on. So Lynn, I think we got Lynn and Pat are the two committee members, Lynn being Senior Secretary Campbell. So, until we get John back on here, he's coming, so.
So, 4.6?
4.6. Where are we?
4.6, Lynn.
4.6? Oh, okay, so now we're at, this is a summary requested for the discussion on the item which was tabled during the April 21, 2020 meeting regarding the transfer of 225,000 from the General Fund of the Capital Improvement Plan Fund, which will be remade, named next week, probably. So, Andy, did you want to explain that? I mean, is there something there to explain or is it just, should we just open it up to discussion?
Well, I heard at the last meeting that they wanted to discuss it, so I'd say, "Let's go to discussion."
Okay. Anybody?
I'll, I'll start the discussion, Lynn.
Okay, sounds good.
He's back, I'm sorry, John back?
No, unfortunately, it's no audio and no video.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard. I'm back, okay. I would, I would like to propose that we take the 233,946 that revenue surplus, and I would like to add the 376,009 that was the operating expense savings that we did not spend in our last year's budget, which was a total 609,955, and move that to the pension fund account to help pay off the debt on the pension loan when it comes due. That would be my proposal.
So, you're taking?
Go ahead. Lynn, did you want to ask a question?
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out where you got the numbers. So, the revenues that exceeded budget of, for 2020, the 233,946?
Right, and then we had a, a shortfall of expenses of 376,009.
So, you're taking all of the surplus from last year and putting it to pension?
Yes.
Can I make one point of clarification?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, I can't figure out how to raise my hand, or I've done it a couple of times and nothing's happened. So, maybe I'm not doing it right. So, the 609,955 is the total operating surplus at the fiscal year 20. But we did reappropriate 114,000 of that into the 21 budget. So, the 80,000 for the roof replacement got moved forward into 21, as well as some other items. So, I, you know, just as a point of reference, really, if you back those items out of that surplus, you know, that would, that would be 495,955.
I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, can you give me those numbers again, please?
Yeah, so the, the fiscal year 21 budget reappropriated. Are you with me?
Yeah.
The, the fiscal year 21 budget reappropriated 114,000 from, that wasn't spent in 20, it was budgeted and appropriated in 20. So, that's part of that 609,000 operating surplus. So, if you're really trying to say, "Well, let's take the surplus that came from that last year and apply it all to this." I'm just pointing out that really, if you back out what's reappropriated, it's 495,955.
Okay, okay. I, I'll amend my numbers and say, "I'd like to appropriate the 495,955 to the, to the pension debt fund that we have established to help pay off the, the loan." I'd like to just, I went back to the February, I believe it was February, I'm sorry, September. September 24th, 2019, meeting that we had to discuss the pension loan. And the document that was presented was item 13.4B in our package. And it went through the history of the loan. And it also gave us two options in which we could possibly fund the payment of the loan. And then there was a, a second item, which was the supplemental information, which talked about the property itself. I, I went through the document and I put the numbers together based on everything that was given to us in that package on September 24th. You know, we, the purchase price of that property was 6,500,000. There's 136 net acres, blocks of oak trees are 11.37 and two parcels, 7.2 and 4.25 acres. The Silver Lake Road and the West Oaks, farmland is 66.2 acres. Farmyard and Buildings is four acres, which leaves 55.23 acres for other. That 136,000 acres was bought at 47,515 an acre. If you paid 6.5 million for 136 acres, that's what it comes out to. When we talk about money paid out from December of 2006 to December of 21, you take the 6.5 million, you add the interest that would occur between December of '06, 2006 and December of '21, it would be 1,925,042, which you add to the price of the property, brings it up to 8,425,042. So, if we paid off the loan at that point in time in full, we now will pay 61,587 an acre. If we take and do a couple of different scenarios where we had the 6,500,000, the interest of 1,925, if we did an interest payment of January of '22 to December of '26, that's another 460,000, which brings it up to 8,885, which costs 64,954 an acre. And that's to get us to when the bonds were paid off. And then we have option one and option two was presented in the package where we do a, a one-year structure and a 25-year structure. If we add the interest that would incur in those periods of time, it would, under the one-year structure, the cost per acre would go from 64,954 to 65,379. If we did it under option two, a 25-year structure, we would end up paying 75,056 an acre. And the interest on that scenario would be 10,267,000 with total interest for everything we paid from the time we bought the property until it was paid off. And it would be a 25-year payment, 15 and another 10. And, and I think that's outrageous. If the, if the people in McHenry County understood that we were paying initially 47,000 an acre, and I assume there was a reason why we did that, so I'm not going to question that decision made by the board. But I do say that we can't continue to march down the road of 61,000, 64,000, 65,000 or 75,000 for acre for a piece of property. I think it's, we are, our responsibility as guardians of taxpayer dollars are to pay this loan off. I'd like to see us pay this loan off sooner than later. And we currently have, if my numbers are correct, we have a, we can pay approximately 2.5 million off with the money we have currently, which would leave 1.8 million left to finance. And I'm sorry, John's not on because John has talked about possibly with low interest rates, you know, we, we take a loan sooner than later because we might not be able to get better rates in the future. And this might be the time to borrow some money and pay the loan off in, in total. And then what I would recommend is that we do a debt certificate rather than a, a float another bond. I think it's on our part as a board to incorporate the payment of this property in our annual budget and decide how much it is that we want to pay. And if it's that 1.8 million plus whatever interest, that's a decision we need to make as a board because that's our responsibility. That's my proposal. And I'd like, I guess, to ask that we have this discussion in June and give Andy and staff a chance to respond to a request that I'm asking for.
Thank you. I think we're just getting now John back in and, and Andy. I'm just looking at all this for, for common, and I do appreciate that. There were a lot of numbers going on, and so I, I couldn't track it exactly to, to follow.
I'll send a copy, Elizabeth, to everybody.
So, yes, so that we could look kind of where that is at. Clearly, in our discussion, and hopefully is Treasure Henning on with us?
Am I?
Yes, you are.
Yay, John, you're back.
I, I've heard, I've heard like 30 to 40% about every other conversation I've heard. I think I know where we're at. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so what I was going to say is I do think there's a lot of information. This, this piece of property and the installment agreement's been a while and a long time coming with different solutions. And we hit the target and then boards would change and we'd change direction and that, and so it's fluid. But we are up until a critical point where we've got to make payment no later than December 31st of 2021. And so, the discussion and the thoughts are extremely important. We do feel, and Andy and I've had a discussion as well as with Treasure Henning and President Scottie, that the value of understanding the full picture of, of capital assets, the district's ability of funding, the challenges of each direction, there are consequences to every action. And again, for the board to be able to make the best decision for the short-term, midterm, long-term, we think is extremely important and the, the dutyary responsibility. So, as far as timing, if the discussion was to occur at the June meeting, we were going to talk about the levy when we talked about the budget timeline. This was to come in August. We wanted to be able to get the camp program together. We will not have the camp asset management program updated by a Janu- by a June meeting. So, we could proceed with just a general understanding that the camp fund, the 10-year plan, is not fully funded. And so, there are needs there. I mean, we, that, that's an easy, you know, solution. Andy, do you want to add anything from our discussions?
Am I still unmuted here?
No, you're on.
No, it'll, it'll be a time crunch to get, you know, everything wrapped up for a June presentation. But if that's the board's desire, then that's how we would proceed on it. I, I would just comment that I think Vern's, most of Vern's numbers came right off the summary. Did they not, Vern?
Yes, they did. I took the numbers and extrapolated them over time, Andy.
So, you know, just to comment on that, I can't comment on the, on the value of the property. You know, what we paid for it is what we paid for it.
Right.
There's, there's 26,000 acres and you can go back and look at them all historically and try and decide at the time that it was bought, you know, was it a reasonable price or not? You know, that's a historical decision. The idea that the financing was excessive, we've shown that it's not.
No, no, no.
That if that land was bought, if that land was bought with bond proceeds, and it's in the summary, and, and we just showed two scenarios, there's a half a dozen ways to, you know, to structure this. But in the two scenarios we showed, it's, it's a, if you'd bought in the land, it was, not that we had that much of the old proceeds at the time, it would have been a million, 1,600,000 more we would have paid in interest carrying this through all the way till it's paid off with the debt certificates and geo-bonds. So, again, you know, using our, the financing strategy we had, saved, I would say saved a million six as if that land had been bought with bond proceeds. And then in the other scenario we showed, it's still And then in the other scenario we showed, it still saved almost $300,000. And, and, you know, I'll try to keep it short, but just one more comment. When we, so that land, you know, that original loan was entered into in 2006. In 2007, as you know, we went out for a referendum and had $73 million of bonds approved largely for land acquisition. That 73 million took the district right up to its maximum debt limit. And, and actually went a little bit above the last levy of 2006 because they knew the, the EAB was growing in '07. So they took all the geo-bonds that were outstanding from '01, they added the $6.3 million pension loan and they said, how much legally can we get? And they got every dollar of it. So my point is, is you hadn't had that $6.3 million installment loan in '06, how would you ever argue it wouldn't have been added right onto that '07 referendum bonds? And then you'd be dealing with 4.5% interest. So they would have just, they would have had more debt margin to work with and instead of 73 million, they would issue 79 and that's at 4.5%, not at 2.5%.
Dave's hand has been raised longer.
Okay.
Go, Dave.
Well, all I want to say is that I understand the concern for the pension loan. But one way to really hurt the district is the camp has already been woefully underfunded. And to restrict any income going into camp, I think is very, very wrong. So I understand it, but at least consider splitting it. I think something's got to go into camp in order to keep that. $225,000 would be huge for camp. So that's my point. I understand the pension loan, but I cannot see ignoring funding camp. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Bill?
Well, it's my understanding that camp would be reduced using Andy's numbers from 3.5 million to about 3.16 million. So, I mean, that's a lot of money now. So I don't think we're, you know, we're lessening the camp fund, but we're not depleting it. I do support Vern's idea that this is an opportunity to deal with the pension debt. And to Andy's point, if this had been rolled into the, if you call them government bonds, it would have fallen into an entirely different part of our budget. And it would not have impacted the operating budget to, to the best of my knowledge. Because those are two separate entities with separate sets of, of legislation that authorized them. And, and there is no precedent, as far as I know, of us reaching into those monies that are allocated for repayment of the bond. On the other hand, again, I've only been around for a year and I'm not questioning what was done in the past. It just seems to me that there, we haven't had a, a amortization, amortization schedule to pay this principal off. It's been paid off sporadically, you know, with every good intent. But I, I, I think that, you know, the, a crisis, I forget, maybe it was Rahm Emanuel who said, never let a crisis go to waste. In other words, find something that you want to accomplish and, and use that crisis to help accomplish it. So if we're going to have monies that we cannot spend and therefore surplus in the budget, I think that's an opportunity to defray the pension debt. Now, Andy has explained that of the 609 that we novices assumed might be available, 114 has already been allocated to, for good purposes in the 21 budget. So that leaves 495, 230 of which are unexpected revenues and the balance of which is a savings because money wasn't spent. However, whatever decisions we come to, I think there's no better purpose than to put the majority of that to the pension loan. We have a million 475 and then we have another four something that Ed Collins got from one of the special re- natural resource funds. So we were about a million nine. If we got four, we would be at 2.3. That's a, you know, I think that's a goal we should, we should try to work for, work towards. And we can try to settle this in June or whenever you, people think it's appropriate. But I, I do think that this should be a priority and someday I think we'll use the fact that we've paid this debt off out of operating funds and sort of tighten our belt and we'll be able to go to the taxpayer and no one will be able to question liabilities on our balance sheet. Thank you.
Okay, Treasurer Henning, Lynn has had her hand up for a while and also Vern Scotty would like to speak.
I believe I've seen Lynn's hand up there quite a while. I can't see a hand, but I've seen her name up there a few times. Every once in a while I do get some information, but go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to be able to address any of the numbers that have been said because I, I just couldn't write those down fast enough. And so I think that that's very complicated for me anyway to respond to those specifics about the dollars. I think Andy does, again, will, would be helpful to have him reiterate what the way, the approach to the repayment of the loan and, and, and some of the decisions that went into that. So there isn't, we're not leaving ourselves or people listening in that it was a chaotic response to something that was done. I think it's been, I think that they've been very thoughtful about this over the years. I understand the value of addressing somebody's debt, you know, but we are, there are several things that I think that need to go into consideration. So I think this does kind of play into when do we get the information? When is it reasonable to get enough information so that we can make a decision? I think June is pushing it. Staff has already said that they're not going to be able to pull all of that information. If, you know, Bill identified a willingness to, you know, wait until staff can, and can reasonably get to it. If we're talking July or August, maybe that's, that's still okay. I think we need to be keeping a couple of things in mind. Andy just showed us today about the fact that we don't know with EAB going down whether or not we're going to max out on our, our levy, right? Reserves aren't there just to, you know, they're not, they're there as a, you know, if we do have money in reserves, that's, it's essential to have money in reserves in case we have a situation in, in an emergency where we need to draw on funds. We don't want to draw down reserves and, and send them away in a way that we can't access them in an emergency and as we are uncertain about the future with EAB. I don't want to just take every, you know, take that necessarily get, that's part of the decision, right? Some of it goes to paying the loan, but some of it, we don't want to just send over to all of over there. Camp is an issue for us. We've been talking about this as long as I've been here. Even if you take down the total amount of camp, I think, Bill, you were coming up with some numbers there, that doesn't change the fact that we don't have the money, right? We don't really have the money that's, that's set aside right now to meet our camp needs. I mean, we have to evaluate, that's what, that's the next step, right? How much money do we have available and where, how does that take us? You know, how many years out does it carry us? If that is even, if we're even talking in years. So that is information I would want to have. You know, the, the, the one last thing, this is, and, and that's why I think this would be great if we could have just more of a discussion. I was not prepared, necessarily prepared for this today because it just, we just talked about the, the money as coming off going, rather than going into camp. So I didn't have that information ahead of me, the dollars in front of me. But think, one of the things we have to think about is what we do, the preservation of land, by its very nature, it's in perpetuity, right? So it's, it's, it's something, it's, it's a public asset. It's, it's not just today's taxpayers that are responsible for paying for it. And so part of debt management and government finance is the spreading out of that debt so that everyone participates, everybody contributes. 60% of our levy right now goes to paying off debt. So you're asking current people to forego maybe services or whatever it is, or, or taking care of our camp to pay off more debt. So I, it was an example given to me, I was, because I was having this discussion with somebody who's in our business community here in the county and he gave me an example of, if you think about a water tower, when water towers come in, you know there's a development coming into your area, right? There's going to be new housing development, maybe it's an industrial park, whatever. But oftentimes municipalities would look at that development, they would say, I want that development to pay for that entire water tower. And his philosophy to them was, no, you bond that out. Why would you expect that development to pay for that entire water tower when people 30, 40, 50, 75 years down the line are going to be benefiting from that improvement, from that public asset? This is, it, this is something that we need to talk about. We, we don't want to, we also have, the people who have put into the conservation district so far, whether it was the people back in the 60s and early 70s that got the district statute established, or the people who put in the time, the money, the energy to get us off the ground, or the people who got, who approved the two bonds to, to go out there and protect that land, everybody has contributed over time. People in the future, having this spread out a little bit over time, sure, we could, we can, we'll pay down some, but we don't want to jeopardize the assets and everything that we've already built that people have already spent the money on to, to satisfy that goal. I, I, I think it's a philosophy that we need to be talking about as well. So I yield my time.
Vern is ready.
Okay, I, I just in closing, want to say a few things in response to some of the things that were said. First of all, we talked about the camp fund. We said that theoretically, if we wanted to have a perfect camp fund, it should have $10 million in it to truly do the things we want to do under the camp banner. It seems year after year, we fund projects and don't spend the money that we fund for them. So even if we had $10 million, we, I don't think we could spend it in the timeframe that we would want to for various reasons. I won't even go into that. But it's ironic that if we go with option two, a 25-year structure on top of the 15-year loan interest that we paid by not paying it off, we pay $10,267,614 in interest. There's your camp fund. So look at it from a different perspective. We could have funded camp with $10 million that we're going to spend to bond houses to pay for a piece of property that's worth $6 million and now it's costing us $16 million and it's going to take us 40 years to buy 136 acres. I'm not having a problem with why we wanted the property, the price we paid for the property. All I'm trying to say is it's our responsibility as the current board members to, once and for all, decide what it is we're going to do, get serious about paying this property off and not keep on giving money to the bond houses when we can use the money internally to do the things we need to do in the district. And this, this payment is, is no different than if a bridge collapsed over Elkhorn Road or one of the other major artifacts that we use in the district. We would find the money to go ahead and put that piece of property or structure back into operation so that the county residents could use it. And we're spending millions of dollars, not thousands, not hundreds of thousands, but millions of dollars for a piece of property that we haven't done a thing to other than have a farm lease on it. That's, we, we haven't spent a dime on it that I know of, that I know of. And again, when the final telly comes in, and, and then again, unless Andy can show me my numbers are wrong, if you're paying $75,000 an acre, that's pretty expensive piece of property. And if we can reduce the cost of that down to the, the best we can do is in the, in mid, mid 60s or low 60s, thousand an acre. This is, this, I started with this five years ago when I came on the board and I'm going to leave. And I'm going to ask that we ask staff to go through this in June. Because for five years, I've had five different boards say, we'll take a look at it next year. And before I leave this board, I would like to have a board discussion about what we as a board are going to do. If you want to change it in July or August, that's up to you. But at least in June, I would like to have a thoughtful conversation of what this loan has done, what we have not done, and what we would like to do. And every board has the opportunity to redirect or re-modify anything a previous board has done. That's the, the option they have. But before I leave, I would like to at least leave knowing that I contributed to a better understanding of what we have here. Again, holding, holding a piece of property for 40 years, that's the one of the proposals. We paid off in, in the 15 years we've had and we have another 25 to that. I, I, that's unacceptable to me, totally. So I, you know, it's, it's up to the board. We will have a meeting next Tuesday and I will formally request that in June, we have a discussion about this formally.
Okay, and, and does anybody else have their hand up at this time?
Yes, Treasurer, I mean Secretary Campbell does.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm not trying to belabor at any point and I'm not going to add to that. I just, I am a little frustrated though that I almost feel like there's, you know, I know you're frustrated, Vern, that's fine, but there was no, I mean, it's a little hard to have a conversation about numbers and having all that stuff thrown out at you when we're, you know, there's nothing in front of us. And so.
It's, it's the data.
That's just, I understand that, but I would have had it up and ready if I had known. So that's all I'm going to say.
Well, okay, I, I think everybody, Vern's wanting to start a conversation, Lynn, I think you're wanting to start a conversation. I think this is the start of the conversation and it's not the end. So I don't, I don't see where there's really an issue here. It started off with a budget operating surplus and I think this is a good discussion and as to what we're going to, to do with it. And this is the beginning of that, that discussion. And I know we, we've talked about having the pension loan not talked about until August and to take things separately, but everything goes hand in hand. So it, it is hard to not to say, well, we're going to talk about one part of the budget here and another part of the other budget in another month. Because you can't do one without the other. So I, I really think the whole thing has to come together somehow. And I'd ask staff to do all they can. But if it can't be done, they should tell us what they can't do. And, and by Tuesday, they, they should be able to have some kind of a, a plan to say, okay, this is what we think we can put together and this is what we can't put together. And that's what I would ask.
We'll go back, John, and, and we will do that. Andy and I will debrief and, and talk about that. There's some possibilities too that we may want to bring in a consultant to, you know, have a conversation with the board in June to talk about different options. I do think it is a complex conversation. It has been and, you know, we are, it is correct, a decision needs to be made, but there are a variety of decisions and it's, and it's a lot of philosophy. So if we, when Andy and I will regroup and we'll take a look at the budget calendar that we presented to you earlier, and it just may need to adjust some things. You know, like I said, the camp program, I can assure you at this point, we can't go up and update, we're not ready. Operations and all the inputs that need to go on, they can't do that. But we know, if we were to look at what we looked at last year, it's underfunded. So, I mean, so the same issue, it only gets worse and it's only going to continue to exasperate when we have new amenities and things that are going to come due into future years and things like that. So, so we'll have, we'll come back and we'll be ready for a conversation on Tuesday. So, so we'll have, we'll come back and we'll be ready for a conversation on Tuesday.
You'd be, you'd be able to, you wouldn't be able to put, you know, exact projects or anything like that together, but you'd be able to say, this is what will be left in that fund if we pay this, if we put these monies here, and these are the numbers that we've been projecting. And I, I know it would all be theoretical, but you wouldn't, we'd at least be able to have an overview of what num, what dollars would be left.
Yeah, you'd have to go back to last year's schedule and look at it from that baseline, and that goes on for that, right? So.
Yeah, that, you've got that already in place, and, and they shouldn't have changed a lot. We haven't had a lot of inflation, there hasn't been a lot of projects changed. So you, you've got a lot of numbers that are already, already there to start with. So there's not a big, a lot of big changes there.
And the other thing, too, I think, you know, with the camp program, and we were talking about that, and, and again, looking at some benchmarking, you know, I don't know any unit of government that has their full, a 10-year capital asset management plan. Many don't even have a capital asset management plan, let alone to have a 10-year fully funded plan, you know? And then they do have other units of government, whether it be the county, whether it be municipalities, park districts, they have a variety more options and flexibility in their statutory language than the Conservation District has. And so it is a complex conversation, and I just, again, I want to make sure, as Andy does and all of you do, that you have all the, you have all the information, because it is complicated, so that you can make the best decision. Because there are limiting factors that we don't have that maybe you're familiar with with other units of government that isn't the same. And so it, a full understanding of that needs to be understood.
Well, I'm sorry, did I, I thought we were talking about a June discussion, though.
Yes, June, Andy. Next Tuesday, you and I, to go back, we'll take a look at, and then talk with Treasurer Henning and see what is it that we can pull together, you know, for the June, June meeting so we can have.
I heard Tuesday, and I thought you guys were looking to present it.
No, no, no. Just, just you, you just let us know.
No, I want to make Andy know, I mean, no, please. Andy needs to make Andy know.
Andy, you can do it.
So Andy's been working really hard, as everybody is with this pandemic, and I just want to be realistic, you know, and I appreciate it, but Andy's been working extra time with all the pandemic, all this, and everybody has, and I know you understand that. And so we'll, we'll push, we'll push forward, we always do. And I appreciate, John, your recognition of staff's, I mean, looking at what we can do and.
Andy, my, my wife and children will tell you that I'm unreasonable, but not that unreasonable, so.
All right.
So does anybody have anything else, or are we, are we set for the night?
I think we're done.
One, one last thing, and we'll talk about it at Tuesday's meeting. I talked to Andrew about how we would utilize his services after he settles in. And Andrew, you'll be on the, at the meeting video on next Tuesday, I assume, and you could add, you know, comments to that, you know, in terms of how we utilize your time as our legal services as it relates to board meetings.
Yes, I will be on the call Tuesday night.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, it's on the agenda, and I just want to make everybody aware of it. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, trustee or Treasurer Henning.
So anyone else have anything else to bring up?
Yes, Elizabeth does.
I did one more. So we're going to update the agenda for next week, and I did send out an email to President Scotty and Treasurer Henning with our tax property receipts are due, so we're going to add that to the agenda and just have that paid as part of consent for next Tuesday.
Okay, very good. All right, with, with that all being said, Pat, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And Lynn, you'd like to second that, wouldn't you?
I sure would.
Thank you, both of you, and I'll take it as both affirmative votes, so, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Everyone, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend, have a good holiday weekend.
Thank you, you too.